Next year will be a third work.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be.
Succeed or something.
Yeah, succeed, achieve.
They've done this before.
Yeah, but they rolled it all, I believe, achieve succeed was the, they rolled that out and went.
When you're a citizen, you're great. Congratulations.
Achieve.
I have that.
Great guys.
Okay, why don't we try to call the meeting to order? And we're gonna let Marcus do the agenda overview, and then we'll go to the Norfolk Sharks, and then we'll come back and do the council.
Yes. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council. It's good to be back after retreat. We have a couple of special guests with us tonight, so without much delay, I'd like to get them in to talk a little bit about some of the exciting things that are happening in the city. Before I do that, just wanted to make a quick series of announcements. I'm not sure if you were able to see the release today, but I'm extremely excited to announce a couple of appointments, one being James Rogers. James is here. Hey, James. James has accepted a new role as basically our community actions coordinator. And for those of you who've worked with James in the past, it's something special how James can engage a room, or group, or community, and more so than that can act quickly. So we're very pleased that James is back in City Hall. And I also want to introduce you his replacement.
Glad to have you back. Glad to have you back.
And I would say that, you know, basically, I'd also like to introduce to you tonight, Jim Riddick. He is the new director of emergency preparedness and response. Jim comes to us from Virginia Beach. He has basically, I've had the experience of sitting in a room with him where he has run various scenarios for the entire region. He also sits on the governor's secure Commonwealth panel, and again, it's just very good to have Jim as part of the team. Welcome. And then lastly, just one more announcement, Chuck Whitney, who's here with us tonight. As you know, Rod Bullard, last week after trying my best to keep Rod here, Rod wanted to do some other things in terms of riding out into the sunset. Chuck, who's been with development for about 14 years, will be the interim director as we set the course for the next chapter. So we're very pleased to have Chuck with us tonight. And while I don't have one of those great public announcer voices, I think it's time to say, let's bring on the Sharks.
Mayor Frame, vice member for the members of council, everyone that's here, Chuck, remember you last week. On behalf of the entire ownership group, staff, players, even the mascot himself, we want to thank you all for having us out here tonight and for inviting us. We're so excited to be able to bring this to you. Just real quick, if I can, just to show the level of support that our ownership group, that we take in what we're bringing to the city of Norfolk, we have everybody here from our ownership group except for one, and that's because he's at Scope right now working on the goal, so they'll be ready for tryouts this weekend. So if I could just have our ownership group and including our staff stand up, I'd like to recognize these guys for a lot of 14 and 15 and 16 hour days over the last week. Guys, we're, like I said, we're so excited to be able to bring a major league franchise to Hampton Roads and particularly to our city, to Norfolk. First, I just want to say a little bit about our group. Aerial Sports Group, we have 25 plus years of sports management and special event experience throughout Hampton Roads. We've owned and operated the USL, which is the league that we played for, United Soccer League's, Virginia Beach Piranhas, pro-am teams for 17 years, now going into our 18th year. We're actually the second oldest sports franchise in Hampton Roads with the same ownership group, second only to the Tides. So we've been around Hampton Roads for a long time. It's our home, we're not from out of town, we haven't come in and hired people or brought people from out of town. We've hired people that are local, we've hired people from Norfolk. We have staff that live here, our players will live here, our mascot is gonna frequent the waters right outside Nauticus, from what I understand. So we're about Hampton Roads and we're about bringing this team to Norfolk. Again, just to touch on a couple of things we're very proud of from our time is we were the W League national champions, we won the championship, and our women's team's been to the final four championship four times in our 17 years. Our men's team, we actually took over what was the Hampton Roads Mariners back in '07, our first year we were regular season champions and mid-Atlantic division champions. And I think some people in here have played against our coach, John Hall, so please don't hold that against us, because he is pretty good. But some of the league honors that our group has won over the years, we're very competitive on the field and we're proud of what we do on the field, but we're more so very excited and proud about what we've been able to do off the field and in the community. And some of these awards include USL Organization of the Year, two-time Executive of the Year, marketing award, and we were inducted into the USL Hall of Fame in 2004, which is the first year that we were eligible for that. We launched the Norfolk Sharks pro soccer team in January of 2011, right down the street here at Nauticus with a great press conference that some of you were at. And since that time, the Sharks have gone from what we originally brought to town was an I League team to an MISL team. The MISL, just to put this to you the best way that I can explain it, if you thought that you were buying an AHL hockey franchise, you've ended up with an NHL franchise. There is no up from the MISL. We have teams and leagues that send their players up to us. We're the highest level of indoor soccer in the country. MISL's been around for 33 years, we've been around for 18, so we're looking forward to carrying on that tradition. This is our, just a quick slide on our outdoor teams in Virginia Beach, the Virginia Beach Piranhas. We will do a lot of cross-marketing, we're gonna bring a lot of things to the Sharks the way we've done them with the Piranhas over the years, and that's really a lot of community involvement. Community partner, I touched on this briefly when we began, it's very important to us to be involved in our community. We attend with our Shark, with our players, as they start to come in, and our staff. We attend and support numerous community events. We were so happy to be invited to be part of the Light Rail official grand opening. We were at the MacArthur Center location. I think the Shark rode the rail for about five hours, took about 2,000 pictures. Sharky was viral all over YouTube that night. There's even a picture with the Shark and an attorney, I believe, called Pete Decker that somehow got on YouTube, so, but we were really happy to be there for that event. There must have been 5,000 people out there. Our area public schools, we're very proud of our, what we call our healthy choices program. What we do with our players, just real quickly, is we go into the schools, we target middle school and elementary school children, particularly middle school, and we send our players in. We send them in, they have their jersey on, they take the Shark with them. We work through the health and physical education departments, and when we go in, and we've been doing this program about 12, 15 years now, it used to be simply going in, talking about healthy choices such as the dangers of tobacco and drug use, responsible alcohol use. Now we're going in, we still touch on those things, but childhood obesity has become such a problem, that's one of the major things that we talk about. So we send our players in, they have their uniforms on. I can tell you from being married to a school teacher, my partner's, he's married to a school teacher, I think we've got school teacher on the staff, at least two or three of us, so we get an earful about it. They can stand up and they can teach and they can teach, they can try to get these little sixth graders attention, but when our players come in and they have their uniform on and they see a big eight-foot Shark walk in, they all of a sudden go, and they listen to what we have to say. So we've worked with the Virginia Department of Health for a number of years to expand this program, and again, we're quite proud of that. We're gonna be in a lot of schools, matter of fact, we're booked for so many community appearances that the Shark actually has a twin that we just ordered that'll be here sometime this week, so don't think you see double if you go to one place and then you see another one. Again, we've recently, just let me touch on Virginia Power Soccer. This is one of our favorite charities, this is soccer for athletes that are in power wheelchairs. You think you've had a bad day because somebody wrote something nasty about Light Rail in the paper, these kids can't move their arms or legs, and they power these wheelchairs with blow tubes or a little tiny instrument that they can barely move their hand with, and they get out there and they play soccer. So we go out and we support those guys, we do fundraising for them, and we're proud to be a part with them. We've worked with the Norfolk Department of Parks and Rec over the last two years to put on two free soccer clinics for children, particularly out at the Northside Rec Center, and we'll be able to expand that now that we're bringing more players into the city of Norfolk. We work with Life Net Health to promote organ donation awareness throughout the schools. Alzheimer's Association is a big one for us this year that the Norfolk Sharks will take on. We've touched base with Ronald McDonald House right after the first press conference, we're working with those guys to make sure families that are staying at the Ronald McDonald House right across from CHKD, if they want to come to a Sharks game, they're gonna be able to come to a Sharks game. We work with a lot of different charities and fundraising events. If you all have any particular events, organizations, groups that you're involved with, call us. We'd love to work with them. This'll give you an idea, there's our Power Soccer guys, there's Sharky with Ronald McDonald. I don't know who was the biggest to him that day, the clown or the shark, they both kinda scare me a little bit, but there we are out in the community. Now I want to tell you a little bit, you know who we are, what we're about, I want to tell you a little bit about Major Indoor Soccer League. MISL, MISL is the highest level of indoor soccer, like I've said, in the entire country. This is such a fast-paced game, it's played off the wall, there are four 15-minute quarters, there's no timeouts. The only time they actually take a break during the quarters is if somebody gets hurt so bad that they have to go out and literally drag them off the court. So it's a fun game, it's a hockey-sized pitch field that we play on. We're over at Scope tonight, some of our staff setting that up for tryouts this weekend. We're gonna average double-digit scoring and about 60 shots a game, so it's a very fast-paced, fun, family-friendly game.
What time is Travis?
We've already got you signed up.
I've already got.
8:30, check-in for you, you guys might want to get there at 8:15, get warmed up a little bit. This is our graphics, our great graphics from Maverick Marketing, their rendition of what we hope Scope is gonna, going to look like with the big Shark on the turf, full of fans just yelling and screaming, particularly when Baltimore comes here, we've got a little port rival going with Ed Hale and the owner of the Baltimore Blast, so. And then just to close out, again, I just want to thank you so much for the opportunity to bring this organization, to bring this franchise to Norfolk. We put a lot of thought into where we wanted to play. Our territory runs way up through Hampton, out past Buckrow Beach. There were other coliseums and other arenas that were an option for us, but I can tell you, after we met with John Ramstein and the staff at seven venues, what was at the time acting city manager of Norfolk, we knew where we wanted to come play, and this was gonna be our home. So it was very intentional that we took the name Norfolk Sharks. We want to be good ambassadors for the city, we want to work with the city, so when we go to Syracuse and we go to Rochester, we go up to Baltimore, Lord help us, we have to go in the middle of winter out to Milwaukee and Missouri and Wichita, but, you know, we want those guys to know where Norfolk is, what Norfolk's about. Everybody knows Norfolk has the military, they have this, they have that, we want to let them know about everything else that Norfolk has. You know, we want to let them know about Nauticus, we want to let them know about MacArthur Center. When the traveling teams come in here, we are going to have in each of their rooms a nice goody bag, okay? I know, not too much, we want to give them beforehand, but nice goody bag that will have information about the city of Norfolk. We're working with Chuck at Department of Development, talking about ideas and things that we can include in that bag for those players. We've done a deal with the Crown Plaza, so that's where all the players are gonna stay. We did that intentionally, we want them to stay in rooms so that when they open their curtain, they look out and they see this across the street, because to us, that's a competitive thing. We want them to see our arena and go, holy cow, these guys playing there. That's a beautiful arena, you guys have done a great job updating that, and we're very excited about that, so.
We're renaming it the Shark Tank.
It is now called officially the Shark Tank, 12, at least 12 dates out of the year, for sure. And, you know, just on behalf of the whole ownership group and the staff, I just want to let you know that it really is our goal, and it's our determined effort to make this team a team that you're gonna be proud of on the field, that you're gonna come out and get excited at Scope, cheer, yell, throw things if you like, that's okay at these games. But we want to also make this a team that you're gonna be proud of to be your neighbor. These guys are gonna live in your neighborhoods, they're gonna be out in the schools with your kids, so that's our main objective with this team. I think we've got some goodies, some goody bags, if I can get our special guest to get up and hand out to you guys tonight.
I'm already on team.
No biting.
I'm erotic.
No biting.
I don't know if you tried that.
Do the mask off.
I may be.
I tell you what, I wish they had that video that we saw, you all see something spectacular, well, I tell you.
And thank you all again for having this ad today tonight. We'll see you at tryouts. 8:30, the trainer gets there at 8.
Marcy, first of all, thank you for bringing everybody down, and we appreciate you. Those were great comments, and I personally, and I think the council thinks it's a great fit, don't let these guys show up at the practice. It'll ruin your morning, what am I gonna do with these guys? But you're gonna, you play 12 home games, is that right?
We do, yes, sir, we have 12 home games, 12 away games, playoffs, and then what we're shooting for is a championship, which is a home and an away series.
And your season starts so.
11, 11, 11. And I should tell you, we've got a great event this Saturday at Scope from 12 till noon. It's our meet and greet receipt, it's open to the public, free hot dogs, free popcorn, free soda.
These guys will come for free hot dogs and popcorn.
Yeah, come out.
Is it Saturday?
Saturday, 12 to noon, I'm sorry, noon to 2.
Noon to 2.
Noon to 2. It gives fans an opportunity to sit in their seat, check it out, maybe they want to go to the other side, sit in that seat before they buy their season tickets, and then we have, we have staff on hand that'll be there to take their ticket order. Sharky will be out there, we've got tryouts going on, and then Mayor Frame, if you would please accept this jersey on our behalf.
It doesn't fit you, Paul.
Thank you all so much, and we'll see you on 11, 11, 11.
Marcy, just to make sure, and I would suggest, you have, keep in mind that, just so everybody knows, and for the public know, that there are advertising opportunities for the team, that they have dasher boards, as you saw, the boards that were up there, just like in hockey, there's opportunities. I, our law firm, just purchased an advertising opportunity with them, and a package. So I would suggest, if you have a chance, give them a call, they'll come down, they'll meet with you, they've done a great job, and I know that we've been very excited and very happy, so I look forward to being there for the games. And also that you've got an office within the city.
Oh, yes.
And that they have moved their offices here.
I'm sorry, I just finished the lease.
So.
5,400 square feet, right across from Scope.
That's terrific.
Yeah, so we're moving, we're actually consolidating three offices from three different cities to downtown. Our players are gonna live here for at least the next two months, I'll probably live in the office, so we're around, please give us a call, we'd love to work with you.
Grant moves on Bosbain Avenue, he's a managing partner, so Rick Carroll does.
I live in.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. All right, we now move to council interests.
I'm glad I took your mind away. All right, yeah, okay. I called Chief Chamberlain last week, and she was very accommodating in terms of having traffic control in the Washington Football Game, of course, it was canceled and moved over to Piledan Field. I just want to make sure that every time that our high schools have a home game and pedestrians have to cross the streets like Piledan Avenue and certainly Princess Anne Road, that we do have, you know, traffic calls is out there. You know, recently, Mr. Burford has been talking about youngsters being able to solicit money on the streets. And I was for athletics, and I was thinking the other day, that when I played recreation years ago, that the city provided uniforms, they provided the shoes, helmets, everything, you know, complete outfits, I don't know if they have more teams or not, and now we have a billion-dollar budget, and kids have to stand on the street corner to, you know, solicit funds. I don't know how effective it would be, you know, if it could be like it was when I played back in the days, even have face masks, you know.
When I played football, they had helmets, and they had their full uniforms.
Yeah, and I don't know whether we could go back to that or not, or subsidize these youngsters so they won't have to, you know, do that. And also, I've mentioned this in the past, and I'm still concerned, I want to make sure that we have just as many athletic events for girls as we do for boys. It's just like, you know, Title IX in college athletics, that we have, you know, volleyball, basketball, softball, all the things we can do to keep our girls active as well. I just want to make sure to be doing that, you know, box and record. And the final thing is, on Hampton Boulevard, quite often, they have, they have the radar of police officers with some traffic going away from the naval face. I would like to see if we could get an officer going north, I guess that's north. I was going down Hampton Boulevard the other day, and I, and it was in rain, and I saw this fellow jogging in the driving rain, and it had to be against the law to be moving as slow as he was.
I've seen him myself.
It was remarkable. I couldn't believe it.
It was the driving rain.
I didn't see anything moving forward. I liked it. The radar kind of arrested him.
He was not breaking any speed. You were talking about Paul. I knew he was talking about you.
He's running a half man. He started already, right into a corner. He started already.
All right, just a quick thing, I want to be sure that we keep an eye on all getting our federally elected officials involved with this flooding.
We have that.
Yes. Just need a periodic update, so we stay on our timeline on that. Other thing is, I noticed in the Virginia Municipal League magazine that there were some insurance, does the Virginia Municipal League have underwrite insurance catastrophic? I noticed that the school that Gloucester was hit, is that a VML insurance adjuster was there? I just worry that we're kind of out there naked without any insurance, building, you know, or whatever, and our schools fell down, I mean, you know, we're teetering on the edge. I know we talked about an umbrella liability, but is there something through the municipal league that, or did I just read that wrong?
The municipal league does offer a variety of insurance programs for the city. We are evaluating an excess liability for the city side, schools actually already has the excess liability policy in place.
Okay, so if we had a tornado and a school blew down, we have a limited.
There's a gap above a certain limit, it would be covered.
And we do have property insurance, we're not self-insured for buildings.
We do have fire and all that.
Property insurance, yes, that doesn't include fire, yes.
Fire, we have it either.
Yes, and I'm not familiar with the terms of the policy, I don't know what it provides for wind, but we have property insurance.
We have separate policies for wind and separate for flooding.
Okay, that's all I have.
It's okay. All right.
Marcus had responded, it was very nice, because I was thrilled to have the Chrysler Museum here, but also wanted the Botanical Gardens to come as they've been on, and they'll be coming soon, so that's. And then, because I know you're all very excited about this, but I have asked for a long time that we have a report from the Historic Preservation Committee, and I know you're excited, but I really think it would be helpful for us. I think.
I thought it was still between us.
I'd like to put that request in. That's it.
Okay, does it go to committee first? Is it gonna go to our committees?
No, I mean, not unlike, we meet with the school board, and we meet with NRHA, and I think we should have periodic updates.
We got an email from 1036 Godfrey about a sewage coming up out of the, I guess, out of one of the outfalls on the side of the house, said the city came out, but it left the waste on the side of the house. That's in the local, we got that a few days ago. Another thing, I had a very interesting meeting yesterday, I serve on the executive committee for the Virginia First Cities, and, you know, we haven't had our discussions yet about our legislative package, but Brian Pennington's doing a real good job for us in terms of outlining some of our critical issues as relates to education, as well as some other transportation, and they got a report, I didn't get to print it out, but I think it'd be great for all you guys to have a copy of that, even though I represent this body on that committee, I think it's important to get that information to you guys so you can see that between the Virginia First Cities, the VML, and our legislators, that, you know, we're kind of circling the wagons in terms of making sure some of these critical issues that we're facing, that we're addressing, so I'll get that information. Brian, thank you, my friend, had a conference call yesterday, about two hours.
Angela.
I'd just like for us to bring back people in terms of the impact that it may have on us. I'd like to know what those numbers could look like if we enacted the two-year delay on collecting business personal property.
We can bring that to the next meeting.
You mean for new businesses?
For new businesses.
Actually, the proposal I found more attractive was booking at profit.
Yeah, that's a gamble, I'm not sure.
That's hard. Based in the business license only, not on the gross, and if the business may.
I think very hard, people be paying themselves such a, taking all that salary, there's no debt.
We should start off with, you could start off with the two-year, because all the other cities are adopting that, and.
I think we should just look at what the numbers, what the impact will be financially to the city, and, you know, what those numbers are, and then take the discussion from there.
Right, we have some preliminary numbers. You know, there's Virginia Beach model where it's wide open, but then there's the Chesapeake model where there is a cap on the gross, so we can, we can bring that to the next informal session.
Why don't we set some time aside rather than ad hoc this night? Because this is a very significant revenue source to the city, and somebody may buttonhole you about a certain, or you may, you know, about it, or maybe find something in the paper. We need to be very deliberate when we start to wade into this by what, by what financial impacts, and as we have for years taken the position to be hold something that, you know, should not be tinkered with, because it is a substantial revenue source. I'll tell you, for instance, my little law firm, I don't know about Andy's, we're one of these, and just like Barclay said, we pay substantial, attorneys pay, I think at the highest rate, I think we pay the B poll tax.
Yeah, you do, because we pay it too as realtors, we're in the same category.
But if, at the end of the day, our whole, I mean, when we finish our calendar, our tax year, we want to be at zero profit, zero. We're gonna pay it out, or we're gonna, we're gonna pay expenses, or we're gonna do all sorts of stuff so we don't have to pay the federal government. So, I mean, there are lots of ways to deal with those issues, to get around paying any B poll taxes, and for some companies, that's the only tax they pay to the city for all the services the cities provide to them.
And I'm not referring to the licensing portion, that's not the portion I'm referring to, I'm referring to the portion of the law, of the bill that refers to their business personal property. I'm not referring to the licensing portion. I don't, I don't think that tinkering with the licensing, I totally agree with you, but I just, would still like to just see the numbers, to see what.
Sure, I think we ought to have it all out there.
So we have a good idea of what we might be doing.
One thing to look at too with that, though, is the financial impact, if we don't adopt something with, for the new businesses and the surrounding cities are, could we end up losing new business because they want to go to the surrounding cities and not have to pay that B poll tax for two years?
to pay that B poll tax for two years?
That's, that would be something we'd always have to wait. For instance, when we talk about the cigarette tax, raising the cigarette tax, at some point, you raise it to a level that people stop smoking. So there is always. There's always, this, it's not dollar for dollar when you, when you cut it or when you raise it.
That's it.
Well, it is time we talk. We ought to set it a couple of hours or something aside so we all understand. And you come in with a recommendation.
We have the third Tuesday in September is a, a meeting. We really don't have a formal.
October, you mean?
In October, yes, that we don't have a formal session at the end.
Okay.
So we can get three in a month. So that would be perfect if that's, you know, an item that you'd like to discuss.
Well, I thought we were going to Botanical Gardens that Tuesday.
Right after the Historic Preservation Committee.
That would be good because a lot of us might, or I don't really understand the new statute to be honest. Angela, just two quick things. Would you reschedule the school board meeting?
We have not. What has been proposed is the last Tuesday of October in the informal session. And that's something I would provide to council for, for use discussed. And the issue is that they are having some preliminary discussions about their budget and some preliminary discussions about even their priority setting. And to meet before that last Tuesday in October may not be the robust conversation that we could have. So that was the, the conversation that we've had with the school board. That's right, Amy?
I think that's right.
Okay.
So are we meeting with them the last Tuesday in October or no?
The last Tuesday in October is the proposal that we could do it actually in the, in the informal session, like at five o'clock. Or even if we took one of the committees and started earlier or started later, that's what's being proposed.
Well, our committee, education committee is the four o'clock point, so it would fit right in.
It would fit right in.
Unless we have something pressing.
We have two presentations by Frank, I think. We can probably push those off. Choice Neighborhoods.
Not push off Frank, that is not the idea.
Choice Neighborhoods and something else.
We can, and one other thing was just a kind of Andy's experience when he went to Greece, but my trip to Brazil, it was interesting to see, it's, it's an interesting country because it looks like a third world country in most parts, but they were, there was really a focus on healthy living and with running paths, bike paths, looked fairly new, exercising stations, you know, along it. And they just, you know, they fit bike paths on roads that you wouldn't think bike paths could go on. And when I hear that argument every time that we can't, you know, I'm still disappointed to this day that we didn't put a bike path on Grammy Street with the resurfacing project promotion via the Works Corner. And, you know, it's because we don't have the whip to do it. Well, how come other places can do it? I, I just don't understand why we're so resistant to, to this idea of putting bike paths on roads. And I think a bike commission.
We already have it. We talked about it in plane.
I know. I was there. I, I think the bike commission can help push this agenda through, but I, I just hope one day we will get past it. And, you know, Virginia Beach does have more land and they, but they have made an effort in putting in bike paths and walking paths on a lot of their major roads. And we're just, I think we're missing out on opportunities to continue Frank's effort of bringing the creative class to Norfolk.
But since we don't have bike paths, do we have less people using bicycles as a means of travel and recreation?
Less people being safe traveling on a bicycle.
They'll knock you off on a bike lane. But I'm not against bike lanes. I'm just saying I, you can look at the HRT buses and the bike racks that tell that, you know, people are using their bikes.
Very quickly, dealing with HRT real quick, I saw there was an email. I've heard two different stories to this, as to the Blue Coats. The Blue Coats are the guys who work the courthouse security. They are under Sheriff McCabe's umbrella when it comes to maintaining the courthouse. They ride the, or they, one of them rides the light rail as any uniform officer does. They wear a shirt, they wear an identification badge that says Norfolk Sheriff's Office. Whether, and I saw the email that Aurelia got with regard to this from Dee, which is who's the sheriff's secretary, can they ride or not ride the light rail? Do they have to pay for the light rail when they commute in? I can tell you, I see these guys a lot and I've heard a couple that they can, as long as they have the badge. I've heard that they can't. If we can look into that and somehow make that one of the priorities, because I'm going to say why, because you say, oh, they're just a bunch of guys in blue coats. Most of them have been former law enforcement and the fact that they were former law enforcement, God forbid anything does happen, they know how to deal with situations. They also will leave earlier than the sheriff's shift change. Because the courthouse, they start, they will start to filter out and they're done by five o'clock. Sheriff's shift change where the uniform deputies are coming out of the jail shifts out a little bit later than they do. So you're going to have security that does ride it during that brief period of time. And I would suggest that as long as they have the identification that has their face on it, it says Norfolk Sheriff's Office, they wear their uniform, which is gray slacks, blue coat and necktie, and they should be allowed to ride it as any uniformed sworn officer. And I'm sorry I took some, but I got hung up on Tommy running in his speedo on Eneema. I just couldn't get it out of my mind. I still can't. Tommy, you shouldn't have gone that way.
He was faster than I was.
Not much faster.
At least you wore your T-shirt.
Speaking of light rail. In USA Today yesterday, I didn't see it, my wife saw it, but there was a nice little blurb about, you know, in the various, the section they have on the various states. I don't know if anybody saw it, but in Virginia, it had Norfolk experiencing success with a light rail system. And, you know, and my wife threw it away. I mean, I can't. So I'm, I'm trying to get that because that's, that's a national, and Richmond paper this morning had a nice column on, you know, the city of Norfolk pulling this off. One of the columnists did a nice piece of saying, you know, Virginia Beach was the Chesterfield of Richmond, the Chesterfield of what have buses going out there. But, you know, we're starting to get some, you know, some really very nice accolades about this. I do think that we can't let up for a moment about driving ridership. And we ought to talk about it, Marcus. I don't know how many meetings a month you have about light rail, but somebody in City Hall ought to be worried about it, in my opinion, every day. About how can we reach out and get more riders? What do we, how do we, you know, continue to keep our foot on that pedal? Because you don't want to start taking these numbers for granted.
Well, I can tell you that I've made it a point to commute bus, light rail to downtown into City Hall. And I will say that from the first time that I've had some issues to, to recently, as of a week ago, that the bus service has been very good and timely, it's been courteous. I have not been, had to do the Cedar Grove exchange again. I've asked somehow that they examine why we had to go Cedar Grove back to the light rail. They were going to look into that. They've been very receptive at HRT. I've been very impressed at how receptive they have been. And back to quick changes and how also the bus was on time, and that's important.
In, in the VML, in the Virginia Town and City Magazine this week, there's a great article down there. So somebody ought to click that.
Okay.
Speaking of Cedar Grove, I met with the lady who sells hot dogs out there, Dee. And I know she's, you know, she's been very persistent, but even she had stories about Cedar Grove and about people who were, when she's out there, people who apparently been there all day selling stuff to people and annoying people. And she's, you know, sort of stopped in mid-send to talk. She wasn't talking about hot dogs. She was like, you got to do something about Cedar Grove. And, and I told Marcus that. I mean, it just, it, it really needs.
Well, I think we ought to look to the long-term solution.
And we've been working with HRT.
Having now ridden the buses, we need to do that. It's easy.
I appreciate the conversation.
And just one more thing. Barkley talked, touched on the flooding piece. I don't think it's enough, I mean, I think we need a piece of writing. I want a strategy. I want somebody to map out a strategy for us, how we approach these federal guys, what the laws are, and then tell us if there's money out there. Maybe we're kidding ourselves. But if there is, you know, how we go about accessing it. And then, secondly, you know, a plan to do that. You know, it just, you know, if you can make the case, there are pots of money available here and there. And so now we've got to impress upon, you know, certain bureaucrats as well as our own federal people, but here's how we're going to do it. We're going to have the meeting or, you know, we're going to all go to DC or we're going to pick them off one at a time or, you know, we're going to write them first and then somebody's going to be a point person. We just need to get our act together when we get at this thing in an organized manner so that we all understand, I mean, what we're trying to accomplish, how we're going to do it, and we're all saying the same things when we see these people. Not just, you know, we need money, because they hear that all day long. I mean, we, we have a real reason to say we need help here. There's one other thing. It was, oh, Marcus, there was an article in the paper, one of the papers outside the region about over the past few years, the number of people who are living below the poverty line, how much that's increasing. And we don't have, we haven't had a real snapshot here recently of how many people in Norfolk are living below the poverty line. But that number apparently is growing. I don't know if that's the same for Norfolk. But intuitively, I would think it is. If it's growing nationally, it's growing here. But we need to take a look at that and then we all need to sit around and decide how we're going to attack that. Okay? I don't want to lose sight of the most, you know, those folks who need our help the most.
Right. We, we actually have our new demagogue for, unless he stepped out, Andrew Yancey. And that's one of the first things that we started to talk about. And I think we're actually fit in the state in terms of the poverty level.
Census numbers are all coming out with all this stuff now, apparently. And they're all, anyway, some of the census numbers are. Some of the census numbers are coming out about the number of people who commute into your city and come back. So that's the information as you get it. We, I want you to share it with us.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I know we got a lot of agenda, but this PH2 legality, can we discuss that sooner rather than later or be sure to save enough time so I understand?
Well, I think now's a, a great time. Basically, PH2 is 615 Bosveen Hemity. And before I turn it over to Bernard, and I think you will recall, there was a discussion, discussion about a certificate of appropriateness for these alterations to a roof line. While design review had an approval, actually the planning commission had denial. The bottom line with this discussion is the timeliness of the application. Basically, staff errant in the sense of.
That's the re- the, the.
The appeal.
Really two issues. One, what makeup, I mean, the building itself.
Right.
Second is the timing of the appeal.
Of the appeal. So in terms of the timing of the appeal, basically, the timeline that was provided to the applicant, he made it within the timeline. That's what the staff provided. But the staff erred in the sense of when the timeline started. So in other words, officially, the applicant would not have been timely in the appeal. And in terms of the position for, for Council Bernard and I spoke briefly before the meeting and Bernard would provide, give us some options that are available.
You're right that the substantive issue is one you're familiar with, which is whether the proposed change is appropriate for the historic neighborhood, this certificate of appropriateness. You've been contacted and opponents to the new roof are raising two points. The first is, is that our ordinance limits somebody who's appealing to doing so within 30 days. And as the manager said.
Thirty days of the day they're turned down?
Yes, I think that's. That, that's right, that's right. And that some staff people miscalculated that and, and shared that with the property owner. And in reliance upon that, his appeal came after 30 days. And so some.
All right, say that again. The, the, our staff told the property owner, you have to appeal by this date.
Right.
And he did that.
Yes.
Turns out that our staff was.
Miscalculated. Right. And the law in Virginia is that a, a government is not bound by an employee's mistaken interpretation of the law. The law is what the law is. But the law in Virginia is also that those 30-day periods are for the benefit and management of your docket. And so it's for your benefit and that you have a right to waive that 30-day period. And so that it's within your discretion whether or not to rely upon the 30-day default. That you can hear the appeal if you think it's equitable, since it was based upon, or for any other reason. You can hear, hear the appeal if you want to, but you're not required to. You could also choose to rely upon it. The second argument that I've seen written to you is that the property owner fails to specify the error, the illegality. And I, I think that's just an argument and people may appear to you tonight and make that argument. And I'm not opining on the correctness of it. But I, I will tell you that the property owner's letter is written in the form that we provide, that we, we don't provide a form, we provide instruction. And so that we, we ask the property owner to specify the error that the planning commission made. And in his letter, he does. And so that the property owner will argue to you that the planning commission looked at whether the roof, roof was duplicative of what was burned down and that the standard is whether the roof is consistent, appropriate with the historic neighborhood. And so you've got that question presented by the property owner. Those are the two arguments that I've seen identified in, in advance in the opposition of your hearing or, or how you would rule on this if you did hear it.
I, I will actually add to that, if it's okay, that we will also hear tonight from the opposition that we were presented that when the building was rebuilt in 2007, it was changed to clavards as opposed to shingle siding, which was the original siding. That actually was not the case. And when it was rebuilt, it was actually sided with singles, with shingles siding, which was consistent with the original building. Secondly, you're also going to hear that we were told that G and L, Gent Neighborhood League, signed off on that change. And they will say that they have researched all of their records and that there is no documentation that Gent Neighborhood League ever was consulted or advised regarding. I'm just going to tell you what you're going to hear tonight.
The first point was aggravated in.
Frank, are you here?
Yes.
Frank had talked to us about the fact that, that it was redone with clavard, am I correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
The National Register nomination for this house, which defined, for the Gent Historic District, which defined this house as a contributing structure within the Gent Historic District, indicated that the distinguishing characteristics of this house with roofline, the porch, a clavard siding. What happened in 2007 was the siding was replaced and converted to shingles.
And what was it originally?
Clavard. According to the National Register nomination.
Okay, so I'll just show you the documentation I've gotten. You can tell me, because I, I don't understand it all, but I've got pictures.
Is that, is that an issue tonight?
Well, the issue that you deal with is when you look at what the design guidelines say, you have to consider when you are looking at modifications to a contributing structure in the historic district. It's exactly what Mr. Kishko indicated. It says, is it appropriate? But you also need to protect the distinguishing characteristics, which is why when we looked at this, this particular structure, we looked not at pictures, but at what the National Register nomination described as the distinguishing characteristics.
To get back to the mayor's question, that people may argue to you that what Dr. Wibley is reporting to you has relevancy upon your judgment, but that the issue tonight is just the roof and the guidelines are within the ordinance if you want to review them, but summarily, they are how it fits into the neighborhood.
Did they get a certificate of the roofline?
Yes, yes, that's what's before you tonight.
Roofline is what is before you. The change in the, the, the design of. The change in the, the design of the, the exterior of the house, going from clavard to sliding was approved in 2007.
That went through the design review and the-
So you're saying that in fact, the original siding was clavard?
That is according to the National Register-
So I have here this card that clearly confirms original siding on the house was in fact with shingles, not clavard siding. Property card, further documents that the original shingles were replaced with vinyl siding in the 80s.
And I understand-
2007 COA application indicates material being replaced then was this vinyl siding, which is not a historic characteristic.
And I agree, it was vinyl siding that was replaced with shingles.
But you're saying, you're saying it's clavard, this is showing shingles.
I'm saying, if you look at the National Register nomination, which is defining, I mean, that is what you've got to look at for the distinguishing characteristics, that says clavard, not shingles.
So you're going to be up there with us tonight, right? And say all that?
Would that change, went through the design review and the planning commission was approved, so that's really not on the table?
Not our-
Right, the issue tonight is the roof.
The only issue that causes that to be relevant is that you've already lost some of the distinguishing characteristics of this house, according to the National Register nomination, which-
So why not go ahead and change it?
Which means that you could conceivably continue to make other revisions, as long as, as Mr. Kishko was indicating.
He already listed it already been changed.
Design review approved it.
Yes.
And the planning commission turned it down, the staff recommended-
No, sir.
Staff did not recommend.
We are limited to the technical issues, and when you looked at the technical issues on this particular case, I went back and looked at what the National Register nomination described as defining characteristics, and that is how I came to the conclusion that we could not recommend approval of the request.
Thank you, Frank.
So the issue on hearing this tonight, to begin with, threshold question is, is the appeal void or voidable, and it appears it's merely voidable?
Correct, within your discretion.
And that's, and even if we didn't hear it, they'd still maintain their ability to appeal to the circuit court?
If the property owner would have the, that option?
Right.
But other parties, they're not parties to this, that, that the city, the planning commission, and the property owner are parties, but something you might also hear from the neighborhood, citizens who are opposed to this, is that our process does not afford them a right to appeal. And so that if the planning commission had allowed this, they wouldn't have had a right to appeal. Likewise, if you hear this and determine that the proposed roof is compatible with the neighborhood, that the neighbors will not have the right to-
Well, they don't have standing.
Right, right, they're not parties.
We're there standing.
Right.
That's our job.
Right.
Is to function as they're standing. So regardless of that, let's go back to the idea, and this is, let's say that we said tonight that regardless of what the reasons are, the, we say it's voidable, and therefore we're going to all say it's void, it's not going to be heard tonight, he would still have a right to appeal to the circuit court, would he not?
Yes.
So, tonight, we just give an opportunity to that individual to be able to put their case forward, and we can render a decision in favor or against.
Correct.
After we hear the evidence.
Yes.
All right. The issue of the illegality bothers me, because it was raised to me. I take it illegality is not in the sense that we, as lawyers here, but it's just in a broad term, where are we actually saying, or do we have to actually make a finding that individually, to vote this way, that the planning commission did something that was illegal? Or we, we look at it, illegality as, just in the broad sense, as a layman may use the term? What is that? Tell me what that means, so I can better understand it, as I hear this appeal.
It's in the broader sense, and so that the planning commission is applying your ordinances and standards, and the question is whether they have applied them correctly or incorrectly. And so if applied incorrectly, here the term illegality would be applicable.
That's, so it's in the broader sense, not that they actually-
The broader sense.
Didn't, that they actually didn't breach a statute, but we can look at it in the broader sense of-
Right, right.
All right. That, that makes it more comfortable for me to understand.
The way the property owner has framed it is that his roof is in conformance with the neighborhood, and that the planning commission's determination that it was not is an error, and in part, his argument is because they thought that it was limited to reproducing only what was there, and not what the ordinance permits, which is something that's compatible with the neighborhood.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
I wanted to correct, to make sure the record's correct, Bernard. Should we vote on whether or not we should, you know, we consider the matter to be, not to appeal timely filed or not? Should we at least indicate that there are a majority of us who either think that it's not, or that we ought to, because if, if we say, you know, that we don't think the guy is conform with the ordinance?
Thank you, that, that would, yes, that would be, that would be better, that is the right part of the record, is that the council should first take up the issue of whether they're willing to hear the appeal or waive the 30-day requirement because of the communication or for other reasons.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Right, the threshold issue. Then, secondly, and if we decide as a majority that, that we want to hear the appeal, then, would you be prepared to address that with us?
Yes.
So we can all go on the record on whether or not we think we should either hear the appeal or not?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Can we go forward on the merits after that?
We can go on the merits after that.
If it goes through.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And then, okay, then we'll-
And is the, is that procedure now clear in your office?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that I've done, and in reaction to this, is I have require, I now require my staff to provide all of the letters regarding certificates of appropriateness before they leave the day that the planning commission votes.
Ask a question. This is not the first time, you know, this issue has come up, as it relates to the Gent Historic District. I know that a lot of that information comes through the civic league, but what are we doing to get this information out to individuals that are living in the community now? Someone is potentially looking at a home, you know, somebody that can live on both sides of it, has a for sale sign there. Is it our responsibility, or should be, the folk in that community's responsibility to try to get that information out before time? It seems to me that we're getting people that are moving in, and after, after some years or what have you, people want to modify their homes, and these issues are coming up, so what can we do?
I think actually, in the real estate contract, it's supposed to be, the realtor has responsibility to inform the buyer that they're moving into a historic district and give them the rule.
The seller has the responsibility to inform the realtor, who then has to inform the buyer.
Right.
The buyer also signs a disclosure that says that they are responsible for doing their own due diligence as buyers to find out what the requirements are regarding that they find-
I understand, I understand that, we're dealing with hollers and some-
But in this situation-
But the question is, that, you know, even though that, that is being done, these issues keep coming to the table.
But this, this question is not that things are inappropriate. This, this gentleman has not forged ahead to do something, not advised that he has to apply for a certificate of appropriateness. He did that, and what he's questioning is whether or not it was granted. So he hasn't built something like we've seen before, or put a sign up that-
The sign came down.
Yeah, that, you know, that then he found out he couldn't do that. This, in this situation, this builder and this architect knew going into it that to do any changes when they, after the fire, that they had to apply for this. So in this situation, we're going by the rules, it's just that they do not agree with what the planning council agreed, or voted for.
But to more directly respond to Mr. Burford's question, two years ago, I directed that my staff send a letter to every property owner in any of our historic districts, that is, Gent, West Freemason, East Freemason, the Hodges House, and the downtown historic overlay, advising them of the requirements, because if they are in a historic district. And we also annually, in addition to that letter, send communications to the appropriate civic leagues, asking the civic league to also take an initiative to inform, ensure that all of their members are informed of these requirements.
Thank you, Frank. That's, that's-
And what was the planning commission's vote, what was the-
Two to two.
The planning commission on this case was unanimous, and recommending deny, or in denying it, based on the neighborhood opposition.
And design review was unanimous in approving it?
No, sir. Design review voted to approve it, I want to say it was a three to two vote.
The record says here, four to two.
Four to two.
And the planning commission was four to zero.
With the four people who recommended the change of design review, indicating that they thought that the particular change in roofline was more appropriate for an urban house with a gambrel roof, such as this house has, and the minority indicating that they wanted, believed it should be restored in the way it had been originally.
Okay, well, let me ask this technical question to you, Frank. Design review is looking at the architectural integrity?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Planning is looking at it from a zoning standpoint?
Um-
Or looking at the, the area as a whole in the historical district?
I think planning is looking at it in the bigger issue.
But, but design and review, design and review's not?
That would be my interpretation, based on the action that was taken, yes, sir.
Right, and so, so what was the, the administration's recommendation?
Our administration, and I will acknowledge Mr. Jones and I had, had numerous discussions on this, I believe that as an administration, that we shouldn't try to make policy, we should look at what the design guidelines call for, and make a recommendation based on the approved design guidelines, and that is why our recommendation was to uphold the planning commission's decision.
Because policy is set, you're not making policy, it's already set.
But you, on the other hand, are the people who make policy.
Right, but I was basically looking at it from, from this standpoint, and I think that's the piece that needs to be, I guess, better understood, in terms of the roles from design review to the planning commission. Holistically, planning commission looks at it everything. Design looks at the architectural integrity, not taking into account whether or not, I mean, dispirited symbol, whether or not architecturally, this is a building for the community as a whole, does this meet criteria, looking at existing homes in, in that community. But the planning commission digs a little deeper, and has to follow more stringent guidelines as it relates to what is there. Now, I could be wrong, but that's my interpretation of, of this thing being, because if, if they were going by the same guidelines, it wouldn't be four to one way, and four to zero the other way.
Theoretically, they are applying the exact same guidelines, but I would agree with your interpretation, Mr. Burford, I think in this instance, the design review committee looked at the house as was being proposed, and looked at that, and said there are other houses in the area that have a similar roofline to what is being proposed, where I think planning commission looked at it and said, no, it really should go back to the way it was, out of respect for the broader neighborhood. So I think they both looked at the same guidelines, but because they looked at it from a different perspective, they came up with different answers.
The reality is, nobody's really wrong, because if this was in another community, they'd both be right.
Correct.
Okay.
The thing that I find confusing, we had the issue at Yarmouth, when they wanted to put in the copper roof, and they couldn't, you know, couldn't find examples of that copper roof in any other historic photographs.
Right.
And that's why it was deemed not to be worthy of a COA. In this situation, what he is proposing is consistent with other architectural historic styles in that same neighborhood. So that confuses me, because I thought that was one of the criterias we used for whether it was appropriate, and now it's not.
You know, the other point is, there was this, they had a fire that I think he thought was a total loss. The guy's willing, his choices, I guess, were to tear it down and put something new that may or may not comply, but certainly wouldn't have the historic value, and he's gone back in there, invested his money to try to restore this home, and he's doing it in a way that is compatible, as you say, with the neighborhood. It's a tough call, because he's, it's gone on the extra yard to renovate this thing, get it a lot closer than a new home would be.
But what happens when the next guy comes along? I mean, either you go, you're going to go by the rules that are in place, or if you start to modify the rules based on a fire this time, something catastrophic the next time, flooding the next time.
I'm just making the point.
I just, you know, I-
My question is, though, that I thought he was going by the rules, and the rules being that the structure needed to be consistent with other homes built of that period in that area. So I actually interpreted, as he was going by the rules, the same rules we used when, when deciding on Yarmouth. That's the part-
What he's proposing, you thought he was going by the rules, and what he isn't.
Yes, and this gentleman, actually, the architect is, that's what he does, is historic preservation.
So are you saying that there are homes that are like the ones he's proposing with that roofline, that are already existing?
In the area, consistent with the time.
The, the four guidelines that you've adopted and are governing this are not really bright line, and if it were, be helpful, I could read them to you right now. The, the first is that you consider the exterior architectural features, which is obvious and not very judgmental. The next is, and I'll read all of this, the general design arrangement, texture, materials, colors, and fenestration of the proposed building or structure, and of the relationship of such factors to similar features of buildings or structures in the immediate vicinity. The third is the extent to which the building or structure would be harmonious with or architecturally incompatible with the basic character of the historic and cultural conservation district. And the last is, the extent to which the building or structure will promote the general welfare of the city, and all of the cities, all of the citizens, by the preservation and protection of historic places. So that the rules are, are something that is reasonable, people might not all agree upon.
Where does it say that it can't change?
It does not say that you cannot, you cannot change it.
That is not in the rules, that's in the guidelines that are supposed to be by staff.
Is that the ordinance you read?
No, it's not in, in the ordinance, that, this is the ordinance that, in particular tonight, we include the guidelines in it, so that you have them in front of you, so that what I just read to you would be the, the criteria that you should be basing your decision on.
That's the law.
I want to know what the law is, that's all I care about right now. As long as I follow the law.
He's adhering to the law.
Yeah, I mean, he's, but, that's, that's the ordinance that was passed, is what-
Yeah, this is, we have this.
Yeah.
But that's a PH2.
But there are other guidelines which, which the staff has, to help these folks in a, so.
All right, well, that's fine, this is the law, we follow the law.
And it, right.
And I will need to acknowledge that the guidelines are simply, you should do these things, the ones that we're, we're looking at, are the approved guidelines for all this work.
Okay. All right, I think we, we got a briefing last week as well, and we'll have an ear pool tonight, so. Okay, so why don't we move ahead? Where are we?
Yeah.
Bill, Bill.
All right, exactly.
You've become so random, right? I used to go against him.
And I'm riding the buses too.
Yes. Dr. Yansey, good to have you.
Pleasure. I really appreciate your special invite, to come and chat with you tonight. All of us, to the quite certain, very proud of our long relationship with the city, and we're also very excited about some of the things we've got on our plate for the, for the future, and I'm grateful for the chance to talk to you about it tonight. You all know this place, of course, but I thought it wouldn't hurt to remind you of our mission, the reason we say we exist, and it's, it's a pretty lofty one. Really, we, we want to do nothing less than change people's lives, or enrich and transform them. And the way we do that is by bringing art and people together, providing experiences that delight, inform, and inspire. We really want to be the center of the lives of everyone who lives in our community. So how do we do that? Who are we? What do we do? Well, we preserve, display, and interpret a world-class collection of 30,000 works of art. That's how many objects are in that, that building over on Mowbray Arch. It's a collection not just of a size, but of a quality that you'd more likely find in Philadelphia or in Atlanta. So it's, it's a pretty extraordinary resource to have here in our own community. And we supplement that collection by doing about 15 special exhibitions each year, these are works of art that we bring in from other communities around the world, so that we can share them with our citizens. And then we- And then we try to bring those objects to life by offering a full range of interpretive and educational programs for people of all ages. And by the way, we do it free every single day. Give you some statistics, that building over on Mowbray Arch, 62 galleries, beautiful theater that seats 375 people, and probably the most significant art library south of Washington and east of Texas. There are 105 people that go to work there every day. We operate annually on a balanced budget, and I stress that word balanced, of $6.7 million. There aren't too many cultural organizations, I think, anyplace in America that can make that claim, but our budget's been in the black for 15 years. And every year, we welcome about 160,000 visitors, and that includes 21,000 students who come through the museum on organized tours. And then last year, we lent 42 works from our permanent collection to 40 museums in nine different countries. That's a great way of sending something from Norfolk out to be an ambassador to the rest of the world. Never hurts to remind folks that we are, I think, a perfect example of a working public-private partnership. Chrysler is a private educational institution run by a board of trustees, the majority of which you all appoint, but we're a city-owned building. It's a great way to leverage public and private resources, and as a result, we can serve the city as an educational resource for the population and for students, economic development tool. I always love it when the head of Norfolk Southern says, that's the reason the company is located here, is cultural amenities like the Chrysler. We're a great tourist and visitor attraction, we're a community gathering place, a place for celebrations and events, and we like to think of ourselves as the cultural cornerstone of the region. A little more detail, just two shots of these galleries, these 62 places where we try to display works of art in a way that makes them appealing and welcoming. And then just to remind you of some of the special exhibitions we've had over the last year. Great success in a group of English Victorian paintings that came here to Norfolk for the first time since 1880, that they left England. Followed that up with great Tiffany lamps and a very successful show of biblical illustrations by James Tissot, show of work by the great African-American sculptors Elizabeth Catlett, 95 years old and still working actively, great interactive show by Danny Rosen. This is work of art that doesn't just sit there and look pretty, but actually lets you have a relationship with it. And then finally, I want to remind you of the Chrysler's role in bringing back Student Gallery, a show for high school students across our region that went dormant for about four years and that the museum revivified about two years ago. This is a shot of the judging day down in Selden Arcade. Last week, we closed a very successful show of illustrations to the children's book Curious George, had a great family turnout for that, but what I liked about the show is it was not only accessible to kids through those book illustrations, but it also told the story behind those books, the flight of the two authors, Margaret and H.J. Ray, who fled on a bicycle from Paris literally one step ahead of the German troops in 1940. And then if you come over to the museum today, you get to see a little bit of Norfolk, the great mural by Kenneth Harris, 32 feet long, that we hope eventually will grace the new city courthouse, on view there to see what the city looked like back in 1965, along with another selection of works by the artist showing views, in many cases of vanished Norfolk. We do a lot of collaborations. Here's a show that's up at the moment. These are two works from the collection of Walter Chrysler's sister, Bernice Garvish, who collected American folk painting made in the early parts of the 19th century. And through collaboration with Old Dominion University, a group of students there put together an exhibition that paired those paintings from the museum's garbage collection with a group of paintings that is up at Old Dominion in the Gordon Galleries there. So you have 19th century folk art paired up with art by contemporary folk artists, a great, great collaboration. We have a great conservation staff at the museum, and I wanted to show you some of the things they've been up to in the last year. On the left is a painting by the American artist Maurice Prendergast, as it looked about a year ago, and on the right, you see the way it looks today. It's quite a transformation. And what's nice about the conservation staff at the Chrysler is they don't work like gnomes up in the attic, but instead, they're out in the galleries as educators. A good deal of the work they do is out on public view, so people can talk with them and say, what are you doing? Why are you changing this? How do you bring these paintings back to life? Well, I mentioned that we lend generously from our collection, and I'll just give you a shot of some of the places that works from the Chrysler collection have been in the last six months. Paris, London, Williamstown, Chicago, New York, Washington, Rome, we really do send our art out around the world. Chrysler Museum, of course, is not just that building over on Mowbray Arch, but we also have the two historic houses downtown, the Moses Myers House and the Willoughby Baylor House, which houses the Norfolk History Museum, and we've been in at work down there. See, a view of the Moses Myers House on the left. On the top is a current show that's at the Norfolk History Museum. It's a collaboration we did with Norfolk State University. It's a show called On the Precipice of Change, documenting African-American involvement in Civil War. Wonderful show that we're proud to present there. Both downtown and in our main building, we're proud to have replaced our usual unfriendly security officers in the gallery with gallery hosts. These are, these are folks that greet you when you come in the door, and they'll help you get your buggy up the steps, and if your car needs a jump, they're out there to help you with it, and it's made a big difference in the way we relate to the public. Sadly, art museums are still a little intimidating to a lot of folks, and our gallery hosts go a big way to demystifying it and making it a friendly spot. They have radios, so they can call for help. Security's hiding in the back. The gallery hosts also like to go out and be ambassadors for the museum, and here's one of them dressed up. Curious George was on the first train of the tide. Just glad he didn't run into the shark. Once a month, the first Saturday, we have Family Days at the museum, a chance for parents and kids to come to the museum, not just to look at art, but to make it and experience it together. These are some of the scenes on a recent Family Day over at the museum. And then we also have some special programs that we've inaugurated this year. For people who have sight difficulties, for blind or partially sighted people, we've introduced a new series of touch tours, where if they can't see the works of art, we give them special surgical gloves and let them actually explore them with their hands under the guidance of our docents. And then school tours. I mentioned those 21,000 students, that includes every fourth grader in the Norfolk Public Schools who come to the museum on a carefully structured tour that helps them explore issues of American history. Here's a bus arriving. And I'm very proud to be able to tell you that last Thursday, at its first meeting of the year, the museum trustees agreed to drop the admission charge that we've traditionally charged for school groups to come to the museum. So now, like everyone else, they come free. And not only that, we've had a trustee step up and create a fund that'll enable us to provide a subvention for the busing costs that are often a barrier for groups coming to the museum. So we hope we've removed all the financial barriers to any classroom teacher wanting to come to the museum. We stress on these school tours, by the way, that they're not coming just for art, but we're encouraging teachers to use the works in our collection as a way to teach across the entire curriculum, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. We're proud of the support we receive, both from within the region and without. We're beneficiaries of the Business Consortium for the Arts, and we have our own business exhibition councils, it's 26 local businesses that through their dues help us bring in exhibitions like Curious George. And we're also proud of the support we get from outside the region, from private foundations like Henry Luce in New York, or from the National Endowment for the Arts, or the Institute of Museum Services. Together, those three organizations in the past year have provided grants worth over $350,000 to the museum. And then we have partners in the city. There's virtually no cultural organization in Norfolk that isn't the museum's programming partner in one way or another. And I'll skip ahead and pass our new website and our audio tours to show you an example of one of those. You may know that the Virginia Stage Company is about to open a production of a play called Red, which is a biography of the American 1950s artist Mark Rothko. And in collaboration with them, we've organized a small show of Mark Rothko's paintings that will open tomorrow. This is five works from the National Gallery of Art in Washington that we brought down to Norfolk and are displaying with our own Mark Rothko painting that you see at the upper left. And then looking ahead again, I'm very excited that this spring, we're going to be one of the very few places in the country to show an exhibition called 30 Americans. This is truly pretty daring and cutting-edge art by some of the most exciting African-American artists working in all media today. It's a great opportunity, and we put together a community advisory group that's going to meet tomorrow night to help us get the word out about this project. But most exciting of all, I think, is the Capitol Campaign, in which the museum is in the midst. This campaign has three goals. The first one is to create, adjacent to the Chrysler Museum, a working glass-making studio. The second is to put in place dedicated operating endowments that'll support the costs of the exhibitions and staffing and programming at the museum. And the third is to expand and renovate the museum's own home. Starting with the glass studio, this is a building, used to be a Wachovia Branch Bank on the corner of Duke and Gray Streets, right next to our parking lot. Museum was able to acquire that a couple of years back with the city's help, and thanks to amazing private support, $7 million in private money, we've been able to convert this into a glass-making studio. This is what it looks like inside, and it's going to open to the public first week of November. What the studio got, what you do here? Well, it has a place for seating, 65 seats there, it has state-of-the-art furnaces, glory holes, and kneelers, all the equipment that you'd expect. We told the designers we wanted to create a glass-making studio in which the best artists from around the world would be proud to come and work, and that's what we hoped they'll do. What'll go on there? Well, there'll be daily demonstrations, two each day and three every day on the weekend, free demonstrations where people can come in and watch glass being made before their eyes. They'll be able to watch someone stick a metal pipe into a furnace, bring out a blob of 1,200-degree glass, and turn it into something wonderful. We've developed a set of school tours that will link together the museum's glass collection and the glass studio, and we formed three educational partnerships, with the Governor's School for the Arts, with Virginia Wesleyan College, and with TCC. The Governor's School and Virginia Wesleyan are actually going to be teaching four-credit classes in the studio. They've made our glass studio manager adjunct faculty members, who will become part of the campus of those two educational institutions. Tidewater Community College, they already have a glass-making program that we helped them found over in Portsmouth, and their students will be teaching interns at our glass studio, gaining them professional experience as teachers and demonstrators that will be part of their graduate education. There'll be classes that people in the community will be able to take, for everything from kids who can come in and with guidance make things out of glass to advanced professionals. These will be fee-based and offered on a regular schedule. We'll have a visiting artist program, that will bring to Norfolk artists from around the world on a continuing basis to be in residence, to demonstrate, to do master classes, and to teach. And finally, the facility will be available for glassmakers in the community who need a place to work. This isn't like painting, which can set up in your backyard, you need a little hardware to do it, so they can rent time in our facility. It's going to be a unique facility, too, or almost unique. There are only two places in the United States that you'll be able to experience what you'll be able to experience at our studio. Places where you can come and find a world-class glass collection, where you'll be able to understand that collection in the context of the whole history of art, and then be able to go across the street and see glass made before your eyes. And then simultaneously, our studio will be one of only two places, or actually, our only place, where glass will be about more than making pretty objects, where it'll be about performance. Let me expand on that a little bit. Glass-making in the studio, you'll be able to see someone, as I say, put that blowpipe into the oven and bring something out. Then you'll be able to go to the Chrysler's glass collection, understand how these objects came into being with a new clarity, and then you'll be able to understand how glass was made in the past, how it related to painting and sculpture, how it was used in people's lives, how it was a part of economy in our regular glass galleries. Only two places here in Toledo that you'll be able to do that. Visiting Artist Program, this is Dante Marioni, world-class glassmaker who makes things like those two vases that you see. He'll be here in January to demonstrate and be in residence, we'll do a small show of his work then. Here's Deborah Moore, who makes almost unbelievably delicate flowers out of glass, she'll be here later in the spring. But these are traditional glassmakers, these are folks that make objects. During the first week that the studio will be operation, we'll be hosting the Burnt Asphalt Family. This is glass-making like you've never experienced it. This is a group of 12 young artists, and they simultaneously make glass, but they also do a kind of social commentary. They'll take a theme, for instance, Thanksgiving dinner or Fourth of July barbecue, they'll dress up in costumes appropriate to that season, and then they'll come to the studio with a supply of food appropriate to that thing, and they'll cook the food, but they won't do it on a stove, they'll use molten glass to cook the food. So what you're seeing on the left there is a chicken that is being encased in a globe of molten glass where it'll roast, and they're working on some other things, maybe that's dessert over on the other side. At the end of the evening, the food's served to the audience. It's a whole new way of making glass a part of people's lives, but it's also making it entertaining, and we expect that this is going to draw a whole new audience to the museum.
You make glass so exciting.
Oh, it is, this is going to be enormous fun. And at the end of the day, we want everyone's expression to look like those kids. So what's our goal overall for this studio? We want to make Hampton Roads an international center, not just for the display and study of glass, but for its creation as well, and I think the studio's going to help us do that. That's the first component of this campaign that's going to happen. The second one grows out of an exhibition that opened last week at the Chrysler. This is called Our Community Collects. It's a show of works that have been drawn from private collections in Hampton Roads. There's 163 objects in this show, from 40 collections. The value of the works for insurance that are on view is in excess of $40 million. These are works that live here in the private hands in the community that we hope one day will find their way to the Chrysler. And to show that that's possible, there are two works that have already made that journey that Frank and Jane Batten have contributed to the museum. They're in the show as an example for others to follow. Now, we know, however, that in order to be able to attract works like this to the Chrysler, we need to have a place to put them, and the museum as it now stands is chock-full. We have works in storage that deserve to be shown, we have no space for it, and we can't with any credibility go to private collectors and ask them to donate things that we haven't got walls on which to hang. So that's the second part of our campaign, and that's to create an expansion to the museum building. Our proposal is to build the museum out on either side of the main entrance into what are now the gardens that flank the front, move the gardens out closer to the hay. These will create two new wings. Goal two is, considering your prior discussion, when we're done, no one's going to know we did anything from the outside. Building will look identical to the way it looks now, but inside, it'll work a lot better. On the ground floor, we're going to improve our main entrance to make it fully accessible to the disabled. Now they have, people have to come in on the side of the building. We'll create one-third more space for the display of our glass collection. On the other side, we'll move the museum's café and catering to the outside of the building, where it's accessible and functions much better, and we'll rethink our Ancient Worlds galleries inside.
You say to the outside, there'll be an outside entrance.
There will be an outside entrance, right. A nice patio, people can eat outdoors in good weather, and all our catering will be concentrated in that spot. And then upstairs on the second floor, we'll gain two new galleries, these are the ones in yellow, for the display of our American and European paintings collection, and we'll open up space in the back of the building so we can show a good deal more of our contemporary art that we did in the past. And then finally, the third component is, in And then finally, the third component is endowment. We're endeavoring to raise funds that can be invested in the income from which will support the ongoing operations of the museum, and that's off to a great start. For a number of years, the Chrysler's had two curators. Through our campaign already, we've received endowments that enable us to double the size of our curatorial department and add two more curators whose salaries are covered in perpetuity. Pretty impressive. So, we feel we're ready to go. We want the place to look like that and be that exciting every day, and we are deeply grateful for the city's continuing support and investment in the museum's success. Thank you very much.
Leave that right there. Marcus, do you know where that shot came from?
No.
The Virginia Symphony played out in front of the museum waiting. And hopefully, your consortium will find a way to do that again, because it was a very exciting night, just like they're playing now at the, you know, at the Town Point and the zoo and places.
We've talked with them, in fact, about an 1812 overture performance much like this.
Yeah, I mean, it was really exciting. It was awesome.
The good news is the water was within the confines of the pulpit.
Actually, it rained that night, and we almost didn't get the show off.
It was very close.
The fire marshals were a nervous wreck about shooting fireworks off the roof of the Chrysler Museum. They didn't, that was, that was pretty courageous that night.
Collection.
Yeah. Bill, this is terrific. One thing we need to do is have a discussion, I think, with you at some point about your entire campus over there. And the city owns some property out on the corner of Brambleton and Yarmouth. I mean, just a sign to tell people where you are when you come down Brambleton, there's no, you couldn't, unless you know where it is. You know, I mean, there are a couple of small things we can do that would, people get off the light rail, if there's a sign saying Chrysler Museum.
You need something there.
Yeah, I mean.
We've been talking with HRT about a sign.
And Stanley knows about, Stanley's been in those discussions more times than he wants to admit over the years about, you know, that little corner piece of property, and people have tried to buy it from us, and we kept it. But the whole, the way your parking lot relates to the rest of the campus and to the glass studio and, you know, so at some point, we ought to have those discussions as well.
We've been talking a bit with Ray Indros and with Frank about possibilities there, and there's some interesting ideas that are taking shape. We'd love to talk more about it.
The other thing, I don't know if you've seen any of the drawings of the Slover Library. Have you seen it? Okay, well, I'll just let you go, because there's a partnership that could be fostered between the museum and the library. Why shouldn't the library have beautiful, fine art?
Sure.
Like this, where when people walk through, they can look at art as well. If we have it, it's not being, that it's not on display, it's got someplace that we could, you know, put it out for beauty, whether it's sculpture or, I mean, there, you can rotate.
And you do a great job. It's a wonderful place. I wouldn't be doing that job if I didn't leave you with propaganda. The other thing I need to link with is an invitation. Would welcome the chance to walk around and show you in person some of the things that we're up to.
Great, thank you.
And I got books due.
Frank, you got 60 seconds.
Yeah.
Oh, it's too late, okay.
[Laughter] What a way you're now going.
Okay, Frank.
Go. Stop. Thank you again, proud of you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Frank.
I'm not going to try to do the present, but you can call your attention. What we were going to do tonight was take you through the second half of the general plan, but obviously, we're not going to do that in two minutes. But, go all the way, Sean, if you'll just drag this all the way down to the bottom. And next, look on that, we're going to pull.
When she has a click, it can be hit F5.
What I wanted to do, we are getting ready to start the public outreach piece of plan development. Rather than go through all of these things, which just would walk you through that, I do want to share with you the schedule for public outreach that we have set up. We are proposing to begin our public outreach in the middle of October, October 20th. Our first meeting would be at Campustella Elementary School, and we have followed that by five additional meetings scattered throughout the city, trying to finish before Thanksgiving so that we can be in an adoption mode for the plan in early 2012. Really, I think this is the only slide I need to show you, because you need to be aware that we're going out to the public before I start sending out all the protests, so that you're not taken by surprise.
Thank you, Frank.
What time are you doing this, Frank?
All the meetings are going to begin at 6 o'clock. What we will have is a brief presentation, and then we're going to break it up into smaller tables for specific information about various...
Okay. Get moving here.
There's nothing.
Hey, Bernard, can you read this?
My senses, yes.
Sorry?
Yeah.
The last anecdote, you know.
President. It's my senses.